Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Woodstock Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for September 26, 2024. Five seconds.
Six.
On favor.
Five.
Okay. The roll call.
Jane Solano.
Gordon Wen.
Michael Gisborne.
Steve Powell.
We do have a quorum. Okay, are there any changes or additions to the meeting agenda tonight? We have two decisions to make. All right, so I'd like to submit the minutes for September 12, 2024. Five seconds.
Five seconds.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay, minutes approved. And we do have a public hearing scheduled tonight. Before I read out the scope once more, if you want to speak tonight, sign them on the sign up sheet. We're going to listen to the applicant and the others supporting the Xena Development. Xena Development, they'll be speaking too. And they're going to be as brief as they can, I imagine. Because we there did present it at the last meeting, this is a whole other public hearing. So after they speak, we'll go to the contiguous neighbors we have listed. And if you're not on there, please be on the sheet. If you really have a party desire and you get stuck and you have to leave with something, maybe we're going to peripatiate. And I'm probably going to look to adjourn to a closer public hearing after tonight. But it's a call to the board though, I'm only one vote. So I'm going to look to do that just as a heads up. And we'll probably give 10 days to the applicant and the Xena Development to respond to the public hearing right away. We'll have 10 days on it. And then, yeah, it depends on us. So with that, I'd like to open up CBA case 2416. Go ahead, second. On favor.
Aye.
Application of Woodstock Land Conservancy as represented by Rodenhausen, Jalen Polidoro, 555 Chestnut Street, Ryanberg, New York 12572, for an interpretation as to whether or not the zoning enforcement officer's determination that the use stated in their application to Eastwood Drive, located in the site of Xena Development LLC, requiring them to adhere to specific sections of Woodstock zoning law, is correct. So with that, I'd like to call Representative Rodenhausen from Jalen Polidoro.
Hi, good evening. Victoria Polidoro, partner at 1110 Polidoro, here on behalf of Woodstock Land Conservancy. With me tonight have Sandra Britton and Andy Mossy, Executive Director of the Woodstock Land Conservancy. As you mentioned, we need a lengthy presentation at the last meeting, so I'm just going to hit the high points for tonight. Brief summary. We are asking you, the zoning board of appeals, to stand in the shoes of the zoning enforcement officer and determine that the proposed private access road through the town of Woodstock is not permitted because it serves a project that would be barred on the Woodstock portion of the site. Or stated another way, the use to which the access road leads must be permitted in the R3 zoning district over which it extends. And in this case, it's not permitted. The access road is located in Woodstock's R3 zoning district. This district is intended for low-density residential use. And to keep it low-density, the town has set the minimum lot size at three acres. The proposed project is proposing lots as small as 1.38 acres, with no guarantee that the remaining acreage will not be further subdivided. So really, it's a much denser project than the R3 zoning district's vision. Because this project would not be permitted on the Woodstock property, we are asking you, zoning board, to determine that the private access road leading to the project is also not permitted. We have provided you with cases that support our position going back to the 1950s. I know that when you submitted your letter today, you'll have a chance to review your attorney, but there is case law supporting our position from all parts of the state. Regarding standing, the developers have asserted that Woodstock Land Conservancy has no right to be heard in front of you. If you look at the map, and would you mind getting up? He's going to pull it out from the board as a reminder to the public where the Israel Whitman Sanctuary is located.
So this is the property, Xena Development property. This is the town of Ulster portion here. And this green area is Israel Whitman Sanctuary, which is directly adjacent. This is the town border as well. This is all Woodstock, and this is all town of Ulster. And then just up here is town of Sawardies. In this corner, we are directly adjacent to the town of Woodstock parcel, as well as the town of Ulster.
Thank you. We've also provided you with a map in your newest submission, which is going to get... It shows just how close the new development is going to be. This is the property line of the Israel Whitman Sanctuary and let, and the lots are right below it. So all the activity, the lights, the noise pollution, is all going to be adjacent to this sanctuary. The sanctuary, as we know, is a 210-acre wildlife sanctuary consisting of mixed hardwood and pinperous forest. It features burnout pools, stream, quarries, mock walls, dedicated to the conservation of those natural resources. It contains protected wetlands and is in the Xena Woods Critical Environmental Area. As an adjacent landowner to the project, the Conservancy will suffer irreparable harm different in degree and kind from injury to the community in general if the project proceeds. That's a lot of legal argument, but it essentially means that everyone in the community might be annoyed by some additional cars or traffic, but the Conservancy will be impacted in a way that's unique to the Conservancy and unique to its property. As you'll see when you do get a chance to look at the map, the new residents and their attendant noise lights will be added to what is now a pristine forest. And this can cause, among other things, disruptions to amphibian breeding, just the type of thing that the sanctuary is intended to protect. We've also provided you with an affidavit from Mr. Mossy, in which he explains the ways that the project will injure and damage the sanctuary if it's allowed to continue. So given the adjacency of the sanctuary, we think it's completely disingenuous for the developer to challenge the Conservancy's standing to have its concerns curbed before this board. In the last submission by the developer, they went so far as to claim that the Conservancy is wasting the town's resources by this important appeal. But tonight, we ask you to consider whether it's really the developer who's wasting the town's resources by building a road in a zoning district that doesn't allow it, at a level which is not permitted, for a project that will require the town's emergency services without any corresponding maintenance support, and which will impact the town's other valuable resources, its wetlands and its wildlife. By determining that the private road would serve a project that would be barred in the town of Woodstock, and therefore is not permitted in the town of Woodstock, this board can help preserve the town's fiscal and natural resources. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions, or I can come back after the hearing.
Any questions from the board? Jim?
I have a question. Is the Woodstock Land Conservancy not a private corporation?
Yes, we are. I have a 123.
All right, is the corporation the fee owner of the...
Yes, we are, if you don't have the property.
Jim?
Hi. I was supposed to use one second.
Could you discuss a little more how the Woodstock Land Conservancy will suffer direct harm from both Eastwood Drive that is different from the public?
Sure. I have a prepared statement that speaks on the issue of standing and specifically our impacts. And I'll refer to the affidavit, which you also have in writing as well. So I'll just start with what I have prepared, and I'm happy to answer additional questions if you'd like. So our standing has been called into question by Xena Development's counsel. However, their argument has no basis for this situation. Woodstock Land Conservancy, as previously stated, is an organization that owns land for the purpose and sole purpose of conservation. Israel Whitman Sanctuary is owned in fee by Woodstock Land Conservancy and was originally, the land itself was originally donated to WLC for the full purpose of this organization's commitment to protecting this land from development and outside threats to the environment and its natural resources. This proposed development and access to Eastwood Drive will directly impact our ability to conserve these lands. Those extend into the impacts of adjacent life pollution, invasive species, including the induction of those by building. We have observed, and it's very common knowledge, that when something is built in a violent area, invasive species are one of the very first plants and vegetation types to take root and take hold in that disturbed land. So this project may introduce life, noise pollution into Israel Whitman Sanctuary, which may irreparably harm the burnout pools, which we have one within 20 feet of the adjacent battery line in between both town of Woodstock and town of Ulster, nocturnal species, and negatively impact future breeding for species which depend on dark skies and low vibrations. The project may also introduce invasive plant species, lawn clippings, pesticides, potential storm runoff contaminants and sewer contaminants, which may irreparably harm the native species of plants, animals, and wetlands in Israel Whitman Sanctuary. It should be noted for this board that the forest within Israel Whitman Sanctuary and its surrounding neighbors is very much intact and internal, unfragmented forest. And what that means is that the category of quality of that forest is extremely high and has been ranked within New York State's Identification of Forest as above the 95th percentile, which essentially means that even though we have no official old growth forests here in our Catskills, because it has been logged over the course of centuries, we are getting to the point where they are now much older, and the quality has now increased to a more mature style forest. So any disruption to that area drastically impacts our ability to protect it in the conservation mindset.
I also want to add that the road is pertinent to the project and enables the project. So though the road itself does not abut Israel Whitman, there is no project but for this road, which is part of the project. So I expect your input tonight.
We are adjacent to the parcels of the road with passive.
That's true.
Can you submit the substance of your remarks with whatever Victoria is going to submit you for the 10-day deadline?
It is all in the affidavit as well. But we can provide supporting documentation if you'd like as well.
Thank you.
Jim? Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you. See you tomorrow. Good, I just...
Take it, speak up.
Where's he? Eddie, my name is Eddie Reber. This is Eddie Reber, the developer.
If you want to set up over there, though, at least the camera will get... Even though it might not be... Yeah, it might be little.
If you don't mind us first.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, the name.
Sure, my name is Devin Kleiner. I'm Xena Development. I thought maybe it would benefit the board to hear from us before our attorney does any more technical illegal discussion. I just want to start by saying that we have a genuine and deep respect for the work that the Woodstock Land Conservancy does. And we see tonight, as we saw last month, they're an extremely passionate group of people, and I believe them to have a genuine and sincere concern about what happens on this land and how it affects the surrounding. I want to say openly that our defense of this very technical... Our defense of this very technical legal determination from the building inspector and our belief in our right to seek approval based on that determination does not reflect our views on the work of the Conservancy and their values. I'm also very passionate about what I do, which is building market rate homes, where I know that they're neat. Other than Sawardies, my wife and my daughter. I plan to be here for a long time and raise my family here. I want to use my skill sets to make a positive impact in the community that I live in. I genuinely and passionately believe that the development of market rate homes does not have to live in conflict with environmental conservation, preservation, and protecting our natural surrounding habitat, if done consciously and done correctly. It's 2024, there are very advanced construction technologies and building technologies that we can take advantage of that lowers environmental impact, reduces waste, reduces materials, reduces truck deliveries. We're looking at modular, prefabrication technologies. Building S0 homes is an option for us. These are all resources and tools that we're exploring and considering as we plan our project on this land. Over the course of our ownership of this land, we've sat several times with the Conservancy, with Andy Mossy, with Kevin Smith, both gentlemen that I have a hundred percent for and that I've enjoyed my conversations with. And in those discussions, we said openly what I'm saying tonight. And we also said that we're not asking for you to take our word that we're going to be the good guy developers. Sit at the table with us, challenge us, push us to develop something that might one day achieve the Woodstock Land Conservancy's seal of approval. We offered at that time to replace our consultants with those that the Conservancy has worked with or have seen too responsible development in the area. What an opportunity we had with over 600 acres of land, thinking that we could design something, Conservancy and developer hand in hand, that manages to make a dent in our housing shortage while also checking the boxes of concern for one of the most stringent Conservancy groups in the country. Perhaps it was naive of me in that moment, but it's an offer that we made and a conversation that did happen. Late last year in that same discussion, we went as far as to offer to put 400 acres of this land that we own into conservation via trust or some other vehicle. I'll say that again, we own 624 acres of land across seven parcels. We offered to put over 400 acres into perpetual conservation. In exchange, we asked that they work with us on the remaining acres and not actively fight to shut us down, sit with us, challenge us, hold us accountable. We're not asking for you to wave our flag of support in the town square, but let the review process of the town run its course. Don't appeal, don't afford unnecessary delays. Just work with us. The response at that time was unfortunately that they would never do something like that. And I understand that their mandate is not necessarily to work with developers on low-impact, sustainable, market rate, single-family home master plans. They seemingly have a strict mandate to do the opposite. But I do feel it's important to mention here that we attempted to avoid this. And they closed the door on us. And here we are, a year later, forced to redesign a project that we're passionate about, and doing it without constructive input from the experts, which is the Land Conservancy themselves, when it comes to the land. I want to openly and on the record today say that our offer does still stand. We will commit to conserving a significant portion of this residentially zoning land perpetually if the Woodstock Land Conservancy ceases their campaign against us and instead allows the review process to just run its course without obstruction. It's a real offer. I challenge my fellow community members to come to the table and take us up on it. Until and unless that happens, we're going to continue with the project as we proposed it, and we have no plans to develop beyond what's included in our submission today. It brought me no joy to be in that room last month listening to members of our community so passionately reject the idea of our project, but also subversive, misunderstand what we stand for and what our project is trying to achieve. And on that topic, what our project stands for, I think it's worth mentioning that anyone in this room that is claiming to know 100% certainty that this is a luxury home development is either not being truthful or has been in misinform. We're applying for a low-density subdivision, and we've made no decision as to what type of home will be built on the land. I think we can stand up a two-better, one-batter starter going for a very affordable price point. And it's helpful, I'm happy to openly and on the record look through some round numbers to help everybody understand what we have. We bought this land for $11,000 an acre. Each lot is roughly three acres. That's $33,000. Double that plus a bit more for the infrastructure cost of the road and all the soft engineering and legal costs that are going into getting the approval and defending the legality of our project. Call that $75,000. Now add another 10 or 15% for our investors, because we certainly did not buy this land with our own money. We don't have it. We raised money from family and friends. That puts you at around $85,000. That means theoretically, we could sell a three-acre lot for under $90,000. And that person or family can then build what they're struggling to do on that lot. That is meaningful and impactful for a working family in our community. And I will stand by that. I think it's worth mentioning that the more legal cost that we need to spend on defending what we believe to be an hazard threat project will continue to drive up the cost that we will need to recover on the project. It was mentioned last month that we need affordable housing, not market rate housing. I agree, we absolutely need affordable housing. The last project that was built in town was rough though. It was over 10 years ago. It took them six or eight years to get approved. It is also well researched and well studied that adding market rate homes to an area that is undersupplied has proven to reduce pressure on home pricing. It's not a controversial statement, it's proven to be true. The plan that you have before you and the plan that we submitted was designed based on the determination that we received from the Woodstock building inspector. There may be two concerns about certain aspects of the plan that we've submitted. We are eager to present a plan to the planning board of both Woodstock and Ulster in collaboration to ensure that it's a code compliant project and aligned with the wider community's initiatives. Right now, neither planning board will review our submission, because this appeal is effectively blocking the review process. I humbly urge that following tonight's meeting, we close the public hearing so that a decision can be made and the review process may continue so that we can work to actually accommodate and answer many of the concerns that folks hear and elsewhere have about the project. Let's at least focus on the narrow issue at hand, the technical and legal components of this appeal and why we believe that the legal argument of the Land Conservancy lawyers to be baseless, and the appeal should be dismissed. I'm going to pass the time to our attorney to talk more about those technical and legal components. And I appreciate your time.
From Salt Lake, question. I'm glad from the law firm, I'm cutting the fair on behalf of both the property owner. So just to reset the stage a little bit, we are here tonight just to review whether the zoning enforcement officer's determination on the permits and approvals required to improve and extend Eastwood Drive is correct. And as we've heard from the Land Conservancy's attorney, the whole basis of their appeals is BBJ Associates' case, which as you know prohibits an access road going through a district where the use would not otherwise be allowed. But as you can see from the boards that we printed out, we have the use tables for both the town of Woodstock and the town of Ulster. And you can see that the use is equally permitted in both towns. Both towns permit single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings as of right. So the use is permitted in both Woodstock and Ulster. Therefore, we comply with the standard outlined in BBJ Associates. And I know the Land Conservancy's attorney said this a couple times, but the project is not barred in Woodstock. We could easily build 30 residential lots on the land that we have in Woodstock. And also, the BBJ Associates' case is not about density, like they're trying to claim. First of all, in the case itself, density, or density, is not mentioned once. And also, the court explicitly acknowledges that multifamily and single-family are different types of uses. Not that multifamily is just more dense residential. They explicitly draw a line between those two being different types of uses. And also, as you can see too from the boards that we have, Woodstock's code also distinguishes single-family and multifamily as different uses. They have separate definitions for the uses, and they also allow them in different districts. So if we tried to build multifamily in the R8, we would have to come before this board for use variance. But under the Land Conservancy's interpretation of the BBJ Associates' case, we could come here for multifamily in the R8 district and just see the narrative variance. Also, it's commonly understood throughout case law and courts and treatises that multifamily, single-family are different uses, not just notions of density. We have a big block cited in our letter. Also, I want to point out too that every case that the Land Conservancy cited in their letter that they submitted today on page four on BBJ Associates was not about density, it was about different uses. First one they cited was City Yonkers versus Rentways. That was an access drive going through a residential district to access a commercial garage. Clearly different uses. And Partition Street versus City of Rensselaer. It was an access road going through Rensselaer to East Green Bush. The Rensselaer zoning district was conservation zoning, which only permitted parks, fields, and golf courses and open space uses like that. But it was accessing a commercial use at a solid waste management facility in East Green Bush. Clearly different uses. Same with Courts versus LH. It was using a parcel zone residential to access a commercial parcel. And also, it was the same thing with Oakwood Property Management. There were multiple zoning districts involved, but they were all different. One was industrial, one was school and cemetery, and the other was agricultural. So clearly, they're all different uses, and not a single one of them was addressing density. Right? So the Oakwood case that they cited summarized in its own words what the BBJ case stands for, and I'm quoting the language, it said, "The use to which the access road leads must be permitted in the zoning districts over which it extends." Use, which is eternal bar, and land use, which is different than bulk grade density or other area regulations. And they haven't submitted a single case that I am aware of where it stands for the proposition that they're asserting that BBJ Associates governs different density in between districts and use. And here, we have the same use. May I have the answer and questions?
Can you remind me what the lot size is?
David, why don't you just...
Can you remind me what the lot size is per lot in the proposal?
In our plan or in the...
In the plan.
They range from 1.3 or 1.4 up to...
Over 10.
Over 10 is a ranging range of size.
You said that if the project were to be done in Woodstock, it would be allowed, but it's an R3, it wouldn't have to be three acres per lot.
Yeah, so we could still fit in under 30 single-family residential lots.
On average. Yeah. Busters, what's considered a bustard development? Where you...
Could you... Yeah, could you use...
Is that right?
Well, it's, yeah, we could still build a single... Yeah, the project is not barred, because we can still do a single-family residential subdivision. And we could also, theoretically, which we're not doing, fit more than the lot size we are in Ulster. So it's not barred, it's allowed, it's an allowed use. It's the same use. We can build single-family homes in Ulster, and we can build them in Woodstock. Do you want this?
No. We got it. You definitely have, like...
Sure.
Do you definitely have like...
Sit on?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a few questions. I have to preface it, let's say on my order. I'm just a citizen volunteer. And here we are again. And I have some questions, and I'm just gathering information and trying to understand exactly what the project is and some of the things that you've given us. Okay, so you gave us a letter on August 21st where you, you mentioned in the last meeting, where you mentioned there can be yearly payment to the Woodstock Fire Department. So my question is, do you also expect to receive emergency services from the Woodstock Police Department as well as the fire department and the rescue squad?
In theory, yes. I guess it just depends on who responds.
Yes, okay. So can you tell us why it is that the development is not receiving emergency services from the town of Ulster when the development is in the town of Ulster?
Well, it could. It just depends on who's able to respond first.
From our discussions with both, sorry. From our discussions with both chief fire chiefs of both towns, we understand that it's sort of like a point of contact, a point when a call is made. And when a call is made, the closest house would be, would be the Woodstock house. So what we discussed with those two fire chiefs, it's not that they don't just... It's not that they don't have the, I guess the Ulster doesn't have the capacity and the timing to answer the call. So what we've discussed, which you mentioned, is that we would set up an HOA for the homes in Ulster. And there would be a payment, an HOA payment that goes into Woodstock to the emergency services to cover the cost that it might take for the Woodstock to sort of make those resources available to come to Ulster. So...
Okay, so last time what I said was, we have volunteer fire departments. So money, I mean, not that money is always an issue, but that's not the main issue. But so I thought, because I read somewhere that the supervisor in Ulster said that they couldn't provide emergency services.
In Ulster.
In Ulster. So that's just a question. Because I, what happens if Woodstock finds its resources already overextended and refuses to provide emergency services to your development in the town of Ulster? Now, I understand, wait, let me think. I understand that all of the volunteer fire departments assist each other. There is a fire in my area, and they came from all over the place. And they assist each other. But you're talking about Woodstock being the primary responder to another municipality, which doesn't make a lot of sense to us. Okay.
Can I answer?
Sure.
Yeah, and very, very like understandable and real concern. From our discussion with the fire chief in Woodstock, making sure there was budget to ensure that he had the resources to answer was his chief concern. So we were saying that we would ensure that we would reimburse, or like, not necessarily reimburse, but pay into his, into his sort of, you know, call it bucket, the exact amount that he would have gotten in the town budget if those 30 homes were in his town. So understand that there is certainly more to it than just dollars and cents. But his concern, we met him, was budget. And so we have worked to try to solve that with the budget. And he, in our discussion, again, it was like, you know, I don't want to misquote him. And we should, you know, we'd love to bring him to the conversation as we go further down the path. But he said that if, you know, we were able to solve this budgetary sort of concern, that he felt very confident in his resources to serve the development.
Just to make one more point, as part of the process between the planning boards, this project will be referred out to all of the emergency services. They will have a chance to make their comments. And we'll have to try to address their concerns in one form or another. So this is all part of this iterative process that we're trying to get into. So, you know, all these... Yeah, so all these concerns I'm sure will come up. We've already heard them. But they will be, as we keep moving forward, something that will be thoroughly looked at and something that will have to be addressed in order for the project to ultimately be approved.
Just a concern, because there is a shortage of volunteers in everything in the town. You know, a lot of people don't have the time and or the capability. But I think the issue is volunteers. And also, if, you know, for someone who lives in the far western part of town, if Woodstock is primarily the primary responder to the town of Ulster, when there's an ambulance in Ulster, if something happens in the west side of town, probably a lot of people aren't going to be too happy about that. I'm just throwing that one in. Okay, more questions? So safety concerns. And so there's this section of the subdivision, regs that's 20232D, which is proposed roads are now supposed to exceed 2,000 feet for cul-de-sacs or dead-end roads for developments of 20 units or more. So that's a safety issue. So this is far exceeding 2,000 feet. So can you acknowledge that that would be a safety issue?
Is that...
Well, that's a... I believe that's a way... So that's again, part of like this planning board process that we would have to go through. So we have to justify at that point that the road is safe and adequate for accessing 30 homes. And that's a design requirement that the planning board is allowed to weigh.
I understand it's way, but it's in the law for a reason.
Yeah, and it's...
And this is not going to be a highway. This is going to be a winding road. It's going through forested lands. Can you accept that that could be a safety concern?
So part of the reason that we're in front of here is because the application for the road is to widen it to be uniform with per the state fire code. So it will comply with the state fire and building code. And just like the emergency services will be lumbered out to the fire departments, it'll be the same for the road. And if they don't think the road is adequate, or they think the radius on certain turns is not correct, those are comments that they'll give as part of the planning board process that we could have to tweak to make sure that it is fully safe or is up to their standard. But I can't give you that opinion. I think that's one that the emergency service personnel have to do. And that's something that they will as part of the process.
We're eager to review the plan with those people that might have that concern.
Can I answer?
They're eager to work with the...
I'm eager, we're eager to work with the planning boards, who will then send the plan out to the necessary folks who might have that concern. And if there's changes that we need to make, we're ready and willing to make it. We just haven't been able to have that discussion yet. Because it's a first iteration of a plan that we submitted. We submitted it to both planning boards, and it hasn't been reviewed. They've said to us that they will not review it until this is cleared. So we would love nothing more than to be able to have that discussion.
I got a couple more things.
Sure.
Also, leading to 30 lot subdivision, is it not required in the town of Woodstock? That that be a major subdivision? And would require specs for a major road? I mean, you're expecting a lot of people to be traversing this road. 30 homes. I also read that some of them could be duplexes, that that could be more. There would be a lot of people in the road. Okay, and we go on to the next one, which is... Do you have the ability to provide a secondary access road? Do you have the ability?
Uh, I want to answer. I mean, in theory, yes. But the reason that we're not doing that is because that would require more tree clearing, more disturbance to the slopes, wetlands. It would be more environmentally impactful. And the first time that we went in front of the planning board with a much bigger plan, we actually had different access points through the property. And one of the comments that the planning board kind of made offhand was, why don't they just use Eastwood Drive, which is existing? So from an environmental standpoint, using the existing roadway, you know, saves a lot of environmental concerns, because, you know, now we don't have to clear acres just for a secondary access point. When you say planning board, which... So last summer, we went in front of the Woodstock planning board, and that was the big plan, the outdoors and all that.
We had a sketch, we had a sketch review plan with a pin on a previous version of our project that we severely reduced the scope of.
I think it's...
It says subdivisions containing 20 or more lots shall have at least two connections with existing roads. You're saying you would have two connections to Eastwood Drive?
And that's from the same, yeah, so that's again, the design requirement that we would have to discuss with the planning board.
Are there any concerns about if that Eastwood Drive is a private road?
Oh, they own it.
You own the entire road? You're saying the people who live on the road have no interest in the road?
They don't.
They have...
Well, they have easement taxes.
We aren't...
But they all...
It's not part of our...
The entire road?
Yeah.
You can't hear it.
And part of what we're, part of, I just want to reiterate that part of what we're planning and what we've submitted would be widening the road to ensure fire code compliance to 20 feet wide. We would upgrade a lot of the clovers there. Everyone on that road would benefit, I think, from the upgrades that we're doing to the road to make it compliant with existing code. So we are attempting to not just extend the road, but also upgrade it to bring it to code, to fire.
Probably we have to. It's not...
I'm just saying it's part of the project.
Right, I get it, but it's not... Okay, so can you tell me what the length of this road is?
Which one?
The one that, and you don't... The length of what that is?
I don't know if I have those plans on.
Okay, well, you can put two lanes.
I have it, but I have to send it to...
Thank you.
I don't know. I'm here, I'm here, so it's not so...
So after the question, it's not really germane to the road per se. But you say, just piqued my interest, I'm sure. Is the market value, you're just saying the general market value of houses as they exist? Or are you talking about a general market value, Woodstock market value?
When it comes to the market rate homes, I would... Yeah, I guess the definition that I'm using of a market rate home would just be a home that is not like legally required to be listed for a certain price. Just whatever the market values that house at would be a market rate home. So it's listed without any like encumbrances of what it should be or, you know, not technically here.
Yeah.
The board member was asking about my definition of market rate home. And I just said that I'm using it in a way that would say that it's just an unencumbered home listed for, and for whatever the market will bear.
Any other questions?
Oh, thank you, Dylan.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, definitely.
I guess we'll, Michelle, we're going to go to the open, to the general public. Zaw is a part of the public.
Do I do contiguous names first?
Continue. Oh, Michelle's going to read it.
Scott Kaner, Janine Kaner, are you on the list?
If she calls your name, if you want to speak, please raise your hand and step up.
Okay. Gregory and Mary Fabi, they did send a letter not in support of the project. And Xena Development Delacie, we already heard from them. And Woodstock Land Conservancy, which we already heard from them as well.
Did you sign up on the sheet?
He signed up, yep. Yep, we'll call you.
Are you contiguous?
Yes.
Come on. Still have the microphone, we just need to name an address.
My name is Rich Silvis. I live on 65 Eastwood Drive. And, you know, my main issue when I listened to the discussion, especially at the last meeting, was all of the traffic on Xena Highwoods Road. You're bringing a lot of traffic into a road that has no lines right now. It's very windy. Actually, when you leave Eastwood Drive, it's very hard to get out. And also, then you come into these winding turns, and you go over a very unmeasurable area. There's like a bridge there. So that is my main concern. Is that you're bringing all this, you know, unconditional traffic on to an area that really isn't developed there. And then the also thing is, I don't know what Eastwood Drive is going to look like. We've heard a lot of things. It's, right now, it's a dirt road. So I don't have any idea of what that would look like that would enable, you know, to house all those 30 houses.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can we take you this?
And your name?
Tom O'Sullivan, 37 Eastwood Drive.
Did you sign up on the...
I just signed up on the list over there.
Oh, come on, come on.
Okay, coming up.
Thank you. Eastwood Drive is just not a viable location for large-scale development. First, a dead-end road is an unsafe road for emergency service providers and first responders. So far down the road, they'd be in the town of Ulster. There is no other address in our help of Eastwood's Drive. And so we cannot guarantee access for those in need or for the first responders in the event of a fire, another hurricane, Irene, or simply due to trees falling down in the electric lines, which happened twice this year. Power was shut down, and we did not get in and out of Eastwood's Drive for 15 hours. The solution is not to carve a secondary acreage through the pristine forest. The solution is for these developers to find a place where the zoning laws permit this type of a project. Secondly, I am troubled by the notion that Woodstock's emergency services and first responders might not be available for Woodstock residents because they are attending to town of Ulster residents at Xena Development. More need for emergency services there means less availability for emergency services in Woodstock. Third, I pointed out last month that Xena Highwoods Road doesn't have a white line because it's narrower than today's safety standards. That means Eastwood's Drive, which I think would look like Route 28, will not be, will be wider than Xena Highwoods Road will be. And that's going to put everybody in danger, and that's the main concern for me. One of my concerns is that years of construction vehicles on a narrow road, I think it's going to set us up for some liability and some part of it. On a different note, I've read through the deed. I have copies of the deed for the land they filed and the way the deed was before they purchased it. They did remove the easement language from the road parcels that grants contiguous landowners like me the use of Eastwood's Drive so we can access our house. That language had been in the deeds for decades. I researched this. And while I don't think they can take the easement rights away, the fact that they were quietly deleted from the deeds, I think speaks volumes about what we're dealing with here, and it may create problems in the future. I found other problems with your deeds. I won't list them all, but I'm submitting copies, and I've highlighted them for you so that you can see them. And the deed is basically very inaccurate, and whoever decided to remove the easement language overstepped their bounds. I am very grateful to the Woodstock Land Conservancy, who is also a contiguous landowner, for their efforts to protect the interests of Woodstock against unsafe and inappropriate development like this. I don't think these are the developers we should do business with or change the laws for. Thank you.
Michelle? Thank you.
I'm going to call the first five. As the fourth one is stepping up to speak, I'm going to call five more. So just we keep it rolling at a good pace. Riley Green, Rich Manzerone, and I'm sorry if I'm butchering all these names, Justin Hooks, Irene Brunel, and Daniella Burley.
Hello, my name is Raleigh Green. I'm a resident of the town of Hurley and a member of Ulster Strong. I think we can all appreciate people's concerns that change is not, that change in their neighborhood is not easy. Choosing between the unknown and the familiar is often difficult. But however, in this case, the application of zoning for the proposed Xena site are on strong footing, and I think it's clear that the Woodstock Land Conservancy's attorneys' legal objections frankly are quite weak. They're essentially saying that the zoning in, for example, Kent, New York, in Putnam County sets the precedent, and therefore it should be recognized as the rule in the town of Woodstock. But the fact is, currently, it's not the zoning code of Woodstock, and therefore their argument should be dismissed. Aside from the apparent legal fact, there is a matter of housing, a housing crisis in the county and in Woodstock. While some say that because this proposed housing project isn't specifically affordable housing, its contribution to the overall housing market should, should be dismissed. But however, we all know that the housing market is far more fluid. As long as the demand for housing continues to be strong in Woodstock, existing housing prices, including those at the lower end, will continue to rise unless we add some new housing to take off the pressure. Finally, the developers have stated they will not develop a majority of the land, including those in Woodstock. This, to me, sounds like a win for preservation advocates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Rich Slanzaron, I live, I live in Marble Town, New York. I'm the executive director of Hudson Valley Property Owners Association, and I have plenty of experience as a municipal planner of both the county and also county and at the town level. The ZDA is a quasi judicial body, and your job, I don't know if it's a, is to focus on what is the law. Now, we heard the presentation by the attorney for the applicant, and I have to say that it was full of misrepresentations, and it was an act of fabrication. As I said, a municipal planner, I read through the Town of Woodstock code, the subdivision code, there is no law that would prohibit this road in the Town of Woodstock law. Town of Kent law, yes. And so, what the applicant would have you do is actually apply the Town of Kent law, which would prohibit a road from one zoning district to another in the Town of Woodstock, but there is no such code in Woodstock. And so, you know, basically, you need to look at your code and look at what the determination of the zoning enforcement officer was, and you're going to find that he was right. And, you know, the issue of density, you know, how planners calculate density is they look at the overall acreage of the development divided by the number of units, and you'll find that the density is actually allowable in Woodstock. As the previous speaker mentioned, you know, we have a housing crisis. And why do we have a housing crisis? Because every time somebody proposes housing, a mob comes out and says, "We don't want more housing." And how did they? Well, you know, we have a process, but the fact of the matter is, is that you're in it, yeah, that's true. When you look narrowly at what you're, what you need to do is you need to look at the law and apply it to the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Hi all, I'm Justin Hooks, I'm a full-time resident at Bearsville.
I'm sorry, can I, can you pull my name, can you answer? Sorry, start it up.
Justin Hooks, full-time resident at Bearsville.
Thank you.
I have two points to make tonight. First, I feared what Elizabeth said about congestion and safety issues that the development caused on Xena Highwoods Road. Three to four times a week, I run the roads around Yankee Town Pond. I'd never run those roads in half light, they're just too dangerous, oftentimes I have to step, step off the tarmac because cars do see me coming around flying bends. But it's not my safety I want to advocate for. Running often brings you up close and personal with the loss of many lives. I've seen thousands of dead eastern newts and spotted salamanders, the pond's beavers have been hit and killed, numerous birds and small mammals have perished on a two mile stretch. Turtles are shattered when they are newly hatched, and on one terrible day, I skipped over the decimated bodies of hundreds of frogs. I must have witnessed the loss of thousands of lives. As well as pollution and congestion, roads bring death to the forests and the sensitive buttons that they cross. Not only will the roads accessing this wildlife corridor be used by residents, self-carried, drug-pup, Amazon delivery drivers, third is a utility phone, arborists, propane deliveries, and so on, to say nothing of the great many vehicles brought to an unfilled bay. Of course, roads connect us to each other and are vital to our way of life, but not all roads are necessary. On my second point, I consider myself astonishingly privileged to be able to call three acres of Woodland Pines. I recognize that there's a housing crisis in this area, and the lack of affordable housing is a painful point for many. We are told this development is for our benefit, but I haven't heard one person from this community embrace what it's offering. I've been at some of the recent Ulster Town Planning meetings, and that list of meetings have been proposals from other developers that seem to be in much more appropriate locations where high-density housing makes sense. On the Xena Development LLC website homepage, we gaze over hundreds of acres of uninterrupted wooded hills from a rustic breakfast table. It's a beautiful view. I won't speculate on the motivations of the developers, but I don't believe they're doing this for the community. They're selling a bucolic lifestyle, one that we all treasure as sacred, and one that evaporates the moment that they break ground. I heard the comments that they made this evening, and I'm not actually against development. I think it's necessary, I just think this is a really, really bad location for it. I urge therefore the board to consider the case not cited by the WRC's legal team in the fullest and broadest sense, and protect this community from the pernicious effects of this development. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Irene Grinnell, I live in West Hurley. Forgot my address, 78 Main Drive in West Hurley. I spoke at the last meeting, and it was regarding the one road. I, I live in a development of 25 homes, and it's, it's, has affected me twice since I've lived there, that the, a tree has come down, and it was right in the middle of the two sections of housing, and we could not get out. It was during the holiday, Christmas time, and it was out for 24 hours, we could not leave. This is my most, my concern, because I'm not happy with the fact how things would develop, or how the roads were developed there. My understanding is that the, the roads got approved by our town, Hurley, but it never was broken through. Now, this past summer, a tree fell down again, almost the same, just across the street from here, the other one fell down. And again, we, I could not get out, and I had to be delayed, actually, I didn't get delayed, I actually walked the intersection so Fred could pick me up. This might seem like very far-fetched, but when it happens to you, it's very serious. And I'm thinking now of, like, in California, how they have their forest fires and they're out of control. How are these people going to get out, besides just emergency vehicles, which is, you know, an issue that I was considering, concerned about? And where, when I was in those situations where I couldn't get out. But what about an evacuation, for whatever reason, you're going to have this streaming port on a one road access to get in and out, to have a, I'm not even sure if Ulster County has a, an evacuation route. So that is something that I'm most concerned about for people, I hate to have people be in that situation, and thank you for letting me speak, and...
Thank you, Erin, I appreciate it.
Daniela, before you speak, can I just call the next five? Andy Mosi, Gail Albert, Joseph Otters, Zoe Keller, and Kevin Smith. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Daniela Barilan, I live on John Joy Road in Woodstock, so it's pretty much the backyard of the project. And I know that I cannot speak for everybody in this community, but given the pushback and signs all over the area to put a stop to this project, I know I can speak for many of us that are here. We of the Xena and general Woodstock community live here because of our love of nature, tranquility, and appreciation for our neighbors, and no matter what side of the island we're on, we share that common bond. But you're saying that 30 houses in Ulster, but even if you did an easement on 400 acres of the Woodstock land, you can still develop 100 acres or say 30 more homes. This would be 60 houses with potential for 120 cars with no secondary access. This also adds 160-plus cars to a critical environmental area that spans well over 1,000 acres. With the understanding that the person or people, after I've spoken to Eddie Greberg a little while ago, bought this large swath of land from, actually, you guys bought it from a very wealthy guy, and now you say that you've got some people, family and friends that are part of this project, this development would be and start just a position to the character of this community. I want to propose that there might be a much better way to leave an everlasting legacy to this beautiful area. If you make a land trust, I don't know the legal ramifications or tax benefits, whatever the process would be that would benefit everybody, that creates a true natural preserve with your name on it, you will forever be hailed in this community for what you have done to maintain. Rather than construction, something that does not fit in this community's character, maybe building a few beautiful homes in the center of the property that can be sold or rented with the lure of being surrounded by protected property could be welcomed by all of us that reside here. As well, and as you know, there would be tremendous tax benefits by making a land trust, and again, I don't know the legal things that you have to do to make that happen. The Thorn Reserve, which we all know, I'll do, we really, I'm almost done. Thorn Reserve is a perfect example of the magnitude and effect something like this has on the community. Clyde Rowe, a man who resided on that property who we knew for decades, made his last wish become a reality by declaring the beautiful field with the foothills of the Catskills in the background forever free from development. People enjoy the tranquility, the nature, and the surrounding beauty without making an impact to the neighborhood in any other manner but to make it safe and to remain the way we of this community who live here 365 days a year, a place where this community can continue to strive and grow without drastic changes to its character. I can only hope you'll consider this a much more lasting and beautiful way to create a legacy.
Gail Albert, Wshp Road in Woodstock, part of the steering committee of Woodstock City Development. I just want to say first that the, I'm mainly going to talk about first responders.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Can you hear me now? Is that better? Sorry. Yes?
We can hear you.
The property that we're talking about in Ulster, which is adjacent to the Israel Women's Sanctuary, is equally important in terms of being a conservation area. It's the same forest at the same level of development approaching and growth. So, Land Conservancy completely agrees that we need more housing, but not here. In response, the issue of paying for the first responders that would be coming from Woodstock, which is police and fire and ambulance, there's a hypothetical homeowners association being talked about. The 30 homes they now propose, who will already be paying taxes to Ulster, will also be paying to maintain, clear, and plow this mile-long private road through forest and wetland in all seasons. Can we really count on them to reliably add first responders to the list that they're already paying for? Homeowners associations are notorious for not keeping their promises. You've already said clearly enough, people have, we have a shortage of first responders. Also, my impression, reading the fire department minutes, is that we have a shortage of paid personnel among first responders. Money alone will not solve that problem. It'll further strain our emergency system. My last comment is that although the developers really sound wonderful, this is not really a local corporation. Xena Development LLC has been incorporated in Delmar with unknown backers. If this road were to be approved, could we actually stop Xena Development from planning 100 homes or more on their 100-plus acres in Ulster? Because that would be allowed under Town of Ulster's zoning laws, zoning code, and that would really overwhelm our emergency system. Once the road is built, we have no way to stop them from doubling, tripling whatever the 30 homes they now have. They've already changed their plans more than once, remember, these are the people who started with a helipor and a 30-hole championship golf course. I don't know what their next set of plans would be. That's it.
Thank you.
My name's Joe Otters, I live on 30 Hollow Road in Woodstock. I have lived on... Hi.
You're hired.
I have lived on 30 Hollow Road in Woodstock for the last 10 years, my house is on three acres and is located within the approximately 2,500-acre critical environmental area. Coming from Long Island to the Casco's was a shock in many ways, I didn't understand why this area is so special. I have a bernal pond on my property. I had never heard of this, and I certainly didn't know its importance, which was explained to me by an ecologist friend. It's special because it dries up in the summer. He explained further that because it dries up, amphibian's eggs are safe from fish. The bernal pond is where so much wildlife in the forest begins. These 2,500 acres are dotted with bernal ponds. Another shock was the diversity of wildlife. I had seen fox, coyote, deer, fisher, ermine, three types of snakes, turkeys, three types of woodpeckers, and even ducks swimming on the bernal pond. Eastwood's Drive lies within the CDA, its modification would adversely affect so much wildlife. And finally, the WLC, as a neighboring property owner, should have every right to appeal this decision. To think otherwise makes absolutely no sense. Thank you.
My name is Zoe Keller, my family has lived on Xena Highwoods for 25 years. I have additional concerns that did not fit in the time limit of the last hearing. I am offended by Xena Development's ridiculous suggestion that the Woodstock Land Conservancy does not have standing. At the Israel Women's Sanctuary, everyone in our community has the opportunity to immerse themselves in the serenity of the deep forest, to enjoy the calls of scrotal canagers, brushes, and whirlers. These birds and many other species that live at the sanctuary are sensitive to light and sound pollution, and would be severely negatively impacted by Xena Development's plans. At the sanctuary, I have seen signs of bear, I've seen fisher, I usually see deer, and a very large coyote was seen at the sanctuary just last week. This sanctuary and the adjoining unbroken forest of Xena Development's 600 acres, 600-plus acres, play a crucial role in our community by providing high-quality habitat for these species where they can thrive away from our gardens, our cars, and our pets. If the Israel Women's Sanctuary's habitat is degraded, if Xena Development destroys forests to extend Eastwood's Drive and construct an unknown number of luxury houses, there will be more conflicts with these species in surrounding neighborhoods, and more potentially deadly conflicts with these species on surrounding roads. Lastly, I am so thankful for the folks who work with Woodstock Fire Emergency Services. My parents, Woodstock residents, drive on icy roads, they still stubbornly shovel their own driveway, and they're getting older. God forbid this happened, but I am terrified by the possibility that there would be no one available to respond to my parents and... to respond to my parents' emergency calls because Woodstock's first few responders are down a long private drive tied up at an HOA in Ulster. The burden that Xena Development will place on Woodstock's emergency services should be a concern for all Woodstock residents. Thank you for your time.
Andy Mosi, Kevin Smith. Patty Goodwin, Carla Rhodes, Howard Cohen, Megan Bianco.
I'm Patty Goodwin. I live in Glenford, but I am the president of the board of Woodstock Land Conservancy, which, as you know, is a directly adjacent neighbor of the forest that they want to rip up for a bunch of luxury homes. Our preserve there, named Israel Whitman Sanctuary, is a 210-acre parcel. This includes a recent acquisition of 54 acres with a beautiful 12-acre pond. This is unfragmented forest, meaning it's not chopped up into homelots. And because it's not chopped up, it's home to species including red fox, black bear, porcupine, and beavers. Habitat there also sustains many resident and migrating bird species, including great blue herons who love that pond. These habitats include quarries, ridges, and delicate wetlands, including one at the southern end of the sanctuary, directly abutting the Xena Development Ulster property. By the way, one of these species is the endangered Indiana bat. Why should we care about bats? Because just one bat can eat 6,000 to 8,000 mosquitoes every night. Given that an Ulster County resident just died of the mosquito-borne eastern equine encephalitis virus, we should care a lot about conserving endangered bats, especially if you're trying to shoehorn a lot of people into an unfragmented forest honeycombed with wetlands. People come to our property there to walk in a quiet, undisturbed place surrounded by nature. That's why it's called Israel Whitman Sanctuary. For us, for WLC, it's a violation of health and well-being that Xena Development wants to undertake a massive construction project, bulldoze the forests, drive out wildlife with ongoing noise and light pollution. There are some things that, once you break them, it's nearly impossible to put them back together. In this time of climate change and hurricanes and wildfires, it feels criminal to carve up unfragmented forest. Not to mention that the design of the access road narrowing around wetlands seems very unsafe, and HOAs are notoriously unreliable. Summing up, in the ultimate example of paving paradise to put up a parking lot, they've decided to site their recreation center with its 80-decibel-level pickleball courts right up against the border of WLC's Israel Whitman Sanctuary. And they try and claim that the Conservancy does not have standing. That's shameful.
Can you hear me? Just to introduce myself, I'm Howard Cohen. I'm the co-chair of the Woodstock Complete Streets Committee. We're a town volunteer committee of volunteers and Complete Streets stands for safe streets for all, motorists, pedestrians, and Cyclists. So we held a walk audit in the area around Eastwoods Drive and Xena Highwoods, John Joy Road. And the vehicle canary witness corresponds closely to the account in the 81-page Xena Development traffic study. But this doesn't account for the pedestrian experience we had, which was horrible and frankly felt dangerous. Our roads are dangerous. The numbers don't tell the whole story. From what we found out, there have been 10 fatalities in Woodstock since 2001. And just this year, surrounding towns, Solkill, New Poles, West Hurley have experienced critical fatal hidden run accidents. Woodstock was literally dodging a bullet. Our incredible volunteer EMS teams are already stretched, meeting the demands throughout the town from this area all the way west. And from what we understand, there are only two firefighters currently in the station house at the Xena Solkill office, the station house. Xena Highwoods area has a history of accidents. Accidents on Chestnut Hill Road, two-car motor vehicle accident on John Joy and Solkill Road, Route 28 and Xena Road, again, on John Joy Road. We'll submit a complete police report once we can handle the accidents in the area. Just this year, on 6/11, a Woodstock driver was injured in a one-vehicle crash on Solkill Road. In March of this year, a Ruby firefighter was struck while on duty. And in November of last year, two drivers were taken to Health Alliance Hospital following a head-on collision on John Joy Road. Eastwoods Drive currently is a straight and pretty pedestrian-friendly road without, you know, much obstruction. So the fact that it's been widened is just one thing that's more of an environmental concern than a pedestrian concern. Our concern is with Xena Highwoods Road. It's a narrow road with blind corners and humps in the .63 miles from Solkill Road leading to Eastwoods Drive. This stretch of road has some of the highest density of road signs in Woodstock, warning drivers of the dangers, corners ahead. We fail as a committee, creating an access road to a development in a neighboring town, adds more danger to Woodstock's already busy roads. It increases the stress on Woodstock's already busy EMS departments. And we understood from the last meeting that Woodstock was expected to support this development with all EMS services. And it adds expenses to an already burdened municipal town budget when we don't have the benefit of the tax base increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Can I turn the mic a bit? Just said, hey, everybody, let's do some relief a little bit. Why was six afraid of seven? Because seven, eight, nine, let's go. Okay. This little laugh can help lighten this a bit. It's hard stuff. So not only do I tell terrible jokes, I'm Carla Rhodes, who tells terrible jokes. I'm a conservation photographer, living and working in the Catskills. This area made me who I am and gave me my career. My whole job is to be hyper-aware of every single creepy, crawling, tiny thing around me. I've spent years documenting the wildlife and ecosystems of our region. I've seen firsthand how even small disruptions can cause significant lasting damage. The road proposed by Xena Development isn't just a line on the map. It's a fracture in our natural world. Roads break apart habitats and isolate wildlife, disrupting the interconnected systems that allow nature to thrive. So you guys, you with me still? It's getting late. Imagine if a road was suddenly built through your home. You're just sitting, watching TV with your husband like you do every night because you've been together 10 years. But then there's a road that goes right through your home. What do you do? But every time that you needed to eat, have sex, hang out with your friends, party, you had to cross a dangerous, unnatural landscape filled with speeding machines that could kill you. Not cool, is it? Someone's got to speak for the wildlife. I've spent years observing our wetlands and burnicles, which are incredibly sensitive to pollution and landl use changes. Roads don't just bring traffic, they bring pollutants, erosions, light, and noise that permanently alter the natural balance. These ecosystems are vital to our community's health and will be directly impacted if this development proceeds. I do understand the need for progress, but when the stakes are this high, true balance doesn't come from compromise. The land being proposed for development as forest wetlands and wildlife corridors is irreplaceable. Once they're damaged, they may never return to their original state. No promises can undo that loss. So a quick history lesson, now that we've done some jokes. Over 100 years ago, settlers in the Catskills hunted eastern cougars to extinction. And the tanning industry destroyed vast swaths of forest, cutting down an estimated 70 million hemlock trees. While recovery has been underway for a while, the majority of the remaining Catskill forests are still second-growth, vulnerable, and far from their original state. Let's think about this. Why should we damage something that's just healing? If I had a broken leg and was just suddenly almost walking in here, would you hit me in the leg with a baseball bat? Would you guys allow it? Please look beyond short-term gains. Let's not allow short-term profit to shape the future of our environment and community. Instead, make a choice that leaves a lasting legacy of conservation for future generations. Thank you.
Cindy King. Hi, my name is Megan Bianco. Hi, Hannah Mear. I am the director of community engagement for Ulster Strong. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. We believe that housing of all types is urgently needed in Ulster County. And one of the best solutions is to build it. We strongly believe that zoning and planning boards should be empowered to follow the processes without delay. I'd like to refocus our attention on the reason we are here tonight, and that is to request that the ZBA decide in favor of the zoning enforcement officers to termination, on which permits and approvals required to improve and extend the existing roadway known as Eastwoods Drive, is correct. I ask that the board closes the hearing tonight and rules in favor of the zoning enforcement officers' termination, rules in favor of the property owner's rights, and rules in favor of the zoning board. Let's have the planning board do their job and review this as a great project for its merits and stop any further delay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lori Ovassaker, Tevis Trower, Brian Murphy, Stephen Van Kampen, John Schaefer, and Abby Anderson.
Hi, y'all. Thank you for being here and thank you for the hard work that you're doing every Xena community. My name is Lori Ovassaker. I live in Woodstock on Mary Hill Road. I often walk the roads. And I love our community. I've supported the Land Conservancy over the years. I've supported all of our town nonprofits that make this a special place for us all to live and grow, embrace families. Woodstock has always been a community of visionaries. The Whiteheads created Bird Cliff. Bird Cliff became a colony of the arts and worked with the existing settlers, the Glasgow Glass Company, the loggers. People worked together to create community. Herbie White helped with my own grandparents to create the Maverick Art Colony. When I was a child, IBM came. And my grandparents called them the IBMers. And IBM built houses on Maverick Road in the Xena area. We've all learned to work together. When I moved back here from California, one of our great old Woodstock realtors said to me, "Those IBM houses, they were the best houses in Woodstock." And in many ways, it was compared to SoHoville. Eddie and Evan founded, found this property. It had been on the market for about eight years. It was an open market, available to everybody. In fact, I did go to the Woodstock Land Conservancy a year or so before it was sold and say, "Let's see if we can work out a way to go over to this seller and see if maybe we can have him donate or work with the Land Conservancy." But that didn't happen. Evan and Eddie came. They had a vision. They loved the land. I walked it with them. I've met their families. They have children. They want to support this community. We also all know that housing is needed everywhere in America. Any politician of any strength is talking, "Housing, housing, housing." Unfortunately, because some areas of our country and world are being grossly affected by climate change, more people are moving here. We are having more rains, more rain, more water here than ever before. I had a meeting with the highway department about six months ago. Their biggest concern these days is not snow, but rain. So, water. I just want to say that Eastwoods Drive does have a 50-foot wide road. Yes, there will be encroaching into the forest land. This land was logged by the previous owner. It is not a totally pristine forest. And the simple request by Xena Development to you, the ZBA, is to allow this process to go forward to the planning boards, which will be incredibly rigorous. All they're wanting to do is connect like-for-like properties. Let's let them do that and then have the planning board have its day. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
I heard us called a mob, so I wanted to compliment us all for behaving so well. My name's Tevis Trower, and I live at 371 Xena Road. My daily walks and bike rides involve going up Xena Highwoods all the way to Israel Whitman, where I found peace. When I first moved here, I moved from Montauk, which was going through huge development activity, explosion and housing crisis, et cetera. And when I moved to Woodstock, I found a sense of peace in the woods. I found aquifers. I found acorns. And what I cannot imagine is the volume of traffic over those small roads, twisty, well-signed, but still accidents happen, increasing. And I also can't imagine pickleball noise as I walk through the sanctuary. I'm worried about housing access for all of us. I think there are plenty of other places around our area that are currently eyesore that could use and would be approved by investment, by developers, but not an unfragmented forest that provides so much for so many species and so many human beings. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Van Kampen. And, well, I lived in Woodstock since the 80s. And I bought my house on, at 619 Xena Highwoods Road, which, since then, they've named my driveway. So that's not my address anymore, even though the house hasn't moved. I like to say that I've lived right on an interesting curve in the road. And following COVID, we've got a lot more traffic on the road than we used to have. And the weight limit sign that used to exist over the little bridge over the Sawkill Creek, which used to be 15... which used to be 15 tons, mysteriously disappeared about 12 years ago. And I contacted Woodstock Highway Department. They said, "That's not us. The county administers that bridge." Well, I got the royal runaround from the county, and they told me that the state decided to take that sign down. I have a relative at DOT up in Albany, and I got hold of him. And he called me back and said, "From what I can tell, a little bridge over a creek in Ulster County isn't even a blip on our radar. So we have no idea why that sign would disappear." Either way, the road is now used much more as a cut-through for a lot of heavy traffic that certainly exceeds 15 tons. And again, with more people here, few people observe that 30 mile an hour speed limit. And I'd also point out that the people who are speaking in favor of this project, none of them have it as much in their backyards as I do. Xena Highwoods Road was never meant to take heavy traffic. But since that sign disappeared, a lot of heftier traffic is going through. You know, I don't look forward to a lot more in my, right out of my front window practically. So, thanks for listening.
Hi, my name is Brian Murphy. I live in the town of Ulster. I'm the Vice President of Ruby Run Gun Club and also a spokesperson. The Ruby Run Gun Club borders the entire eastern edge and some of the southern edge of the Xena Development parcel in the town of Ulster. Our club was established in 1948 with the mission to conserve, restore, and manage game, fish, and other wildlife and its habitat, to seek and procure better hunting and fishing and sportsmen, promote and maintain friendly relations between landowners and sportsmen. I'm not here to discuss the specifics of the road extensions. I'm here to discuss the impact plan development of the homes. The Xena-owned parcel in the town of Ulster borders Ruby Run Gun Club property on six of our hunting parcels. Our club honors New York State law that restricts the discharge of firearms within 500 feet of occupied home. Given the setbacks of the planned homes, we will lose approximately 20 acres of our hunting property, which we pay taxes. This is the unintended and unwelcome consequence of Xena's plan, the road extensions of Eastwood Drive. Again, I'm not here to comment. I'm not here, my comments are not, do not pertain to the specifications of the road itself, but rather to its purpose and how it will negatively impact our responsible hunting that our club has enjoyed for the past 76 years.
Hi, John Schaefer, West Hurley, New York. I remember last year, we all saw something we never saw before. We had a burnt orange sky and the air was filled with soot because Canada was burning. And then Maui went up like a flash. California burned all summer, and then the Southwest burned. And this is happening around the world. The world's catching on fire. And what's happening is because we're burning too much carbon and we're taking down our trees. In the future, your children's grandchildren will want water. And this is one of the few places on earth that can keep it. The Hudson River Valley could survive the worst battles of global war. And it will provide a model for future generations that don't ever need to know what the earth should look like and how to live in this dangerous harmony we've heard. When you take up these trees, you're losing your water forever. And the land will be dead for as long as there is a word to call it. So, it'll never come back once you build it. So, I don't care if I'm from Beijing. This is a nightmare project. This area here, when I moved up here, I'm from Long Island, I thought, "This is the most beautiful place in the world." I still think that. There's that quote, that Shakespeare quote, "Emerald Isle in the Southern East." To me, that's the Catskills. That's around here. All this liquid is going to go away. It's going to go in the Hudson, it's going in the ocean, and it will be gone. So my focus is really the water and the bears and the butterflies and the pollinators and the rest of it, of course. But man, they're going to want water. Your grandchildren that you've never met yet are going to want water. And that's here. So that's my argument. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Abby Aronson. I am a 21-year resident of Mount Tremper. And to touch upon what the gentleman just said with regard to my children, child, and my future grandchildren that I haven't met, my 25-year-old has been actively looking to buy a home for the better part of two years up here. And this is what happens time and time again. He is looking for what would be called median-priced housing. And he will require a mortgage, because he is, after all, 25. Four or five times in a row, all cash offers have been made on houses that he could afford, houses that are then turned around and improved by $200,000, $300,000, $400,000. So now a $600,000 home or a $500,000 home is now worth upwards of a million. And my son will never be able to buy a home here in the place where he grew up. Likewise, because I have lots of friends in this room, I was on vacation last year with a friend in this room who just spoke when I got a call from the Xena Homes team about asking me, I'm a publicist and a marketing person in the area. I've worked with lots of developers, including a developer that the land conservancy internment I have in common. And they said to me, "We made a miscalculation in what we brought to the table. We'd like each opportunity to come back and speak to the community. Would you consider joining us?" And I said, "Well, I don't know." And talked to a lot of people and asked a lot of questions. And in fact, I met with the team and asked a lot of questions because as a community member and as someone who has a business in this community, my reputation is everything. And the question that I ask of the ZBA, as well as the community, is the following. Why not allow the planning board to do their job and create vigorous, vigorous standards and guidelines for this project to coexist with conservation? I just heard Evan tonight say that upwards of 400 acres would be, I believe he used guaranteed in perpetuity in conservation. I'd like to see conservation. I'd like to see homes. And I'd like to see more of a working-together attitude across the board. And I thank you very much for your time.
Members of the zoning board, members of our community, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Brad O'Ford. I've been a resident here for 23 years. I want to live here maybe for another 20. It would be a long time for my family. I just heard Ms. Aronson, who was actually an employee of the applicant for this improper and improperly granted road determination. I heard her speak at some length. I don't know if there's a time limit, but I'd like for you to give me a few minutes because I bring documentary evidence, which needs to be made part of the record.
Let the gentleman speak. I'm giving everybody an extra minute, but that's it.
Okay. So, dancing as fast as I can. First of all, I have reviewed the second filing by Attorney Glad, which is voluminous. It's like a small telephone book. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, whether your protocol is to defer deliberation and some final action until the subsequent being. Quite frankly, I will see how you could act tonight. And respectfully, I want to request that the evidence be considered along with everything else that's done and that an investigation be-
Brad, if I can, I'll just help you out. We're not voting today.
All right, well then, I hope, I hope in your discretion, Chairman, that there might be another public hearing after a due investigation has been had of the fact. We have a myth, we have a story here, that a couple of gentlemen came here, proposed Woodstock National, and then they encountered a stiff resistance, and then they changed the name. The truth of the matter is, as the documents will show, Woodstock National LLC was a sort of stalking horse or a placeholder. The property was acquired by a shell company, which is registered in the state of Delaware. The only place in the documentation is registration, and it's being authorized to do business at the Secretary of State here in New York. The only place where any name of one of the two original proponents exists is when Mr. Eddie voluntarily dissolved the placeholder or stalking horse. So I have several things to mention. Number one, in the prior filing by Attorney Glad, it was stated that there had been discussion about our fire department. I can tell you, and I would be prepared to give a sworn statement, I have investigated the case. There will not be any fire or emergency service. It has not been granted. It has not been negotiated. It will not happen. We have, we have a challenge verging on a crisis about manpower and woman power for emergency services and fire services. So here's what I want to get to. I'm going to deliver tonight to you, honorable court members, some documentation of what I just said. Other claims have been made. But in the final analysis, this is not about issues which, with all respect, are in your purview. The land conservancy needed to bring this case because improvidently, imprudently, and improperly, a determination was made granting a standard road to these people who want to develop property which they said they weren't going to develop. They said they weren't going to develop Woodstock. So I want to give my documentation, and I hope the judgment of the Chair, the wisdom of the Chair and the Board that we'll have a chance, after the community, the supervisor, and the town board have had a chance to get into the larger issues. What we have here is a secret case, which is being argued on narrow grounds. Segmentation is occurring here where the road is being dealt with as if it is an access to a property in another municipality, and that's the core issue here. The Woodstock Land Conservancy has been characterized by Attorney Glad as a few dozen individuals who are just anti-develop. So the truth of the matter is, we need more investigation, Mr. Chairman. And I hope we'll have another opportunity to get real facts into the record. Thank you very much.
My name is Susan Painter. I've lived here for 13 years now. I just want to briefly talk about housing that's market valued and the false choice between the environment and affordable housing. We should not have housing in a beautiful, unfragmented forest. I'm sure there is no one here that doesn't want to have more affordable housing. And there's no one here who could question that. The question I have is, what does market value even mean? Could anyone's children really buy a home when the people in this development will have to be paying for an HOA that includes a recreation center for maintenance of a road and all emergency services? And who's to say that those homes won't be used as second homes for wealthy people? Who's to say that they won't be used as Airbnbs in Ulster? So we don't know what benefit this will provide our community for the housing shortage that we all struggle with. That's all. Thanks.
Does anybody have a chance to concede your time? Do you want to take it now? All right. Yeah, not very well. All right. Yeah, we'll let you open up. All right, well, thank you. Listen, I want to thank you all for being a wonderful, wonderful event. I mean, I've been to a lot of hosted public hearings. You guys are the best. Really well. Really good to hear everybody. We just heard, and we appreciate it. So with that, I want to propose to the board to close the public hearing. We have two issues. One, we were going to, I mentioned having a temporary stage, everybody. Listen, if you need to talk, you have to go outside, okay? Otherwise, you have, you have to, we have a meeting going on, and we have other business at this, so. Fizzy town. Okay, needy town. I'm going to be there. So anyway, we are going to, as the applicant and Xena Development, 10 days to submit stuff that they've got, or that they feel that they need to add. And Jude, Jude's proposing 10 days. Jude, what do you propose?
I was proposing, because we often do this with public cameras. We allow the record to stick open so that anyone can submit comments in writing to the ZBA office, not just the applicant and the hearing board. That's my suggestion.
The only issue is that the applicant has a right, the donor has a right to respond to whatever comments you choose. So the needs to be, if you're going to allow or comment on the public, that the 10 days has to be extended to the applicant to be able to to issue comments or other things. I would like to just, of course, I would just like to give 10 days to the applicant. It's kind of an ongoing thing. We've got two public hearings. If you'd like a chance to do it, you can submit documentation tonight, as Mr. Horner stated. Other than that- Give it to, how do I do that? Where you put some farm, anybody, if you want to put on the record, and 10 days to go to-
Chairman, just for the record, did you identify 10 days on Monday, October 7?
So 10 business days, whatever that number is.
Just put 10 of them on Sundays.
All right, October, we'll give it to Tuesday, October. What's his phone number?
8.
8. That sounds good. 5:00 PM. Does something plan? Have you taken that? All of them there? Okay, all of them exposed. Thank you, everybody. We have more business to do, so please be quiet and be directed. Thank you so much. Guys, like I said, please, we can't do this here. Come on. Thank you. Do you hear me? I can hear you, and I have a big microphone. I have to see who's there. Thank you. You can eat though, if you like. Okay, Lori, how can I? Okay, guys. With that, I would like to recess.
24/16.
Recession case, 24/16. Do I have a second? All of them. All in, recess. Do we have two sessions tonight? Josh, you want, you want some? That one, that one. Okay, we have, uh, Judy, you're on. I would like to open up the ZBA case, 24/14. Do you have a second? All of them. Okay, this is, everybody, where the, which one is this?
Arce Steinberg.
Steinberg.
Carport.
Carport.
You know, we did, we did discuss this in our last meeting.
All right, so I'd like to open up a public discussion. Jude?
Actually, Stephen. I'll, I'll go through.
Yeah, we can be a little bit.
I, I, okay, so I know that you were going to speak to the land inspector about this, that was next to the house. Did you say, was that needed to include this in the house?
Yes, but I don't really, the land, that would be-
Okay, so then I suggest that you take this because if we are going to suggest that she put the house, put the carport next to her house, we should give her that particular clearance, which is not-
And we already gave the other side there.
Well, no, I think, the question is, you-
Well, no, I think, the question that Stephen was making was, if she would make it right adjacent, because her, her house is technically inside the base. But since it's right next to her house, I thought maybe the argument of that conversation was she's winning because she's putting it right adjacent to her house. She's allowed in front of the setback. She don't, we would restart.
We didn't have it all in front of us. I'm not assuming that you tell, but you indicated that-
It was?
It would be in the setback.
It would be?
Yeah.
It is, but since her house is there. Okay, so then what I did was say she would still need the side yards at that. So I wrote down in there so that she would have come back to us if she decides to put the carpet there.
Yeah, I, I viewed it differently. I just said, if that make a difference, then let her come back.
I'm sorry.
I thought just let her come back and have all the details sorted. I doubt that's happening to sort of-
Didn't, I didn't.
Because I didn't, I didn't go measure, see where it falls based on the backstory of these areas. I didn't think that was our job to kind of allow for that.
Okay, so what kept happening is somebody, she was asking for 39 feet from your variance at home. And so what we could do is we could give her less.
Yeah.
You know, rather than just saying no, we could have given her less and that she would have been able to put it somewhere else. Should we have that option? But I haven't, did you come back to us?
Right, but with the uncertainty of what that less was, I just didn't want to take the gamble. So I mean, we can go and go to lunch. I can go and measure and see where that falls.
All right, we can do a little more to, you know, I don't want to maybe come back and spend more money. Maybe it's just a little more, like, work on our part.
Right, well, yeah.
I mean, we could just give, we could just give her a side yard, but maybe she's done.
Well, you know, this is my understanding. If the house is already there and she's just putting something in line with the house, I don't think she needs it. But I, but I-
She's coming to the side yard.
But she does get the side yard, which is, I wrote it here. And that's what they write, the side yard is clear. So yeah, I could, so maybe we should just go around it and-
All right. Oh, if we give her the side yards, that back, definitely. Not giving them one to the right.
Yeah.
But she can, you know.
Wherever that lies, right? Wherever it's the most, well, in the specific situation for the, is it specific to how many feet?
No, actually, it's 9. Well, actually, the front, no, that's the front. There was a, it's what is that zone? It's like B or whatever it said.
It was simply, it was simply specific because it's 25 feet.
But the house is less, is the house encroaching on it?
Yes, and the house is encroaching.
Oh, so.
But you know, but when I'm standing for somebody else who has to get a variance was told by the timefall, they're just, that they didn't need it because the house was already there. So.
I think in the way it's written is, is if, if where the house is is within that 50 feet, then she could have been there and that's it. And then she doesn't have to come back to us.
But it's encroaching, right? Instead of-
Her house is encroaching on the setback, yes. But it's already there. And so the question is, if she's, if, if the house is already there, can she put something in line with the house? And I think the answer to that is yes. The setback she would need is the side yard.
Yes, right. We'll shut up.
It's open. Yeah.
All right, so. Okay, we re resolution. Based upon the standards of consideration, vary variances and conditional upon compliance of state representations. Every variance in the zoning law of the town of Woodstock before every involved regulations, modification of required yards, section 260, 20C, B, 2C for a three-foot perimeter into a minimum required 50-foot side yard setback is hereby granted in 39 inches to a minimum required 50-foot front yard setback in order to install three, three bed, one car carport hereby denied subject to all requirements of the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, New York State Real Property Law and all other applicable laws, codes and regulations. Board, in. I, one, Steve, enough?
Yes.
Share this floor?
Aye.
Steve, though?
Aye.
Okay. Resolutions adopted in favor of four in favor, zero opposed, two abstaining. With that-
Felicia, Felicia. Did you include the last meeting?
With that, I would like to close ZBDA case 2414. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open up ZBDA case 2415. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, one for discussion before we do a resolution.
I went and saw this property and it's such a minor variance. They're asking for 5 feet. It's not visible anywhere. It's the only place they can put it, so that's why.
This is the summary?
This is the understanding that I have, yes.
Okay.
Very good sort of the plans that we had, so.
Yes. So read the resolution. Based upon the standards of consideration, vary variances set forth in section 260, dash 32A, and G, the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, and area variance in the zoning law of the town of Woodstock before every involved regulations. Modification required yards, section 260, 26B, 2B for a five-foot perimeter into a 25-foot required side yard setback in order to construct a four-seas and seven-ones hereby granted, subject to all the requirements of the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, New York State Real Property Law and all other applicable laws, codes and regulations. What was this file? Board, in. I, Alex, Steve, Hill?
Yes.
Jude, Salada?
Aye.
Absen. Absen.
Steve, though?
Aye.
Resolutions adopted for in favor, zero opposed, two absent and zero abstaining. Okay. With that, I propose ZBDA case 2415. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Do we need to go into the executive session or anything?
Well, we can do that. We're still with the fence case that nobody needs, so.
Oh, fence case?
Fence case.
Anybody want to take that fence case over by the street road?
No, it's good. I'll, I'll take it, but I, I'm, I'd base it for it, but. I don't support that one. We barbed wire it.
With that.
Cooper Lake. They can do that.
Can I see that?
Yeah, they can do that.
With that.
That's for town. City, it's just-
Oh, the city case doesn't have to follow up, or so.
Oh, yeah, they do.
No, they don't.
Oh, there's a thing about clearing land over.
No.
They don't.
Right, no, they don't. They do what they say.
We lost one case against them.
So what if they decide they want to do the whole? What if they want to expand this around the whole thing? There's nothing we can do about that.
They closed out the diagram I saw there.
But there's an eight-foot barbed wire fence in the town of Woodstock.
Right, but, but this is, when I was on the planning board, we had another issue with the, with the city of Kingston and the wiring department. We had no authority. Is that right? We have no authority to pursue Kingston.
Not entirely.
Not entirely.
Yeah. Let's do it, yeah.
Well, he's just showing the fence that they-
Yeah, on Cooper Lake. Eight foot.
They closed off, you used to be able to walk. You weren't supposed to. You never were supposed to walk out on the deck and they put up a fence that you can't walk on.
And it's got barbed wire. Barbed wire.
You know, I think barbed wire is, um-
Barbed wire.
Barbed.
That's a pretty- Barbed wire is not allowed in the town of Woodstock.
That's a pretty nice, um-
What if they want to do the whole? What if they all of a sudden decide want to do the whole thing? And they, and we're fighting a guy who wants to put a garden?
We lost the city of Kingston once for tree.
We mean, they're protecting their water supply, right?
Right.
Yeah, well, they could protect it in other ways. An eight-foot barbed wire fence. So let me ask you something. If it was just the eight-foot fence involved, why are you wrong? Wouldn't you feel bad?
If it was just what?
Just, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, you guys.
What?
Since you're thinking, if, if I got him to take the barbed wire off.
Certainly, it wouldn't be a bad, it wouldn't be a bad idea. I don't think, I don't think the fish is that big, man.
You can go in up, you can go in up. If they decide to walk along, put the wire.
It depends on if it's like a homeland security issue. Because there's not only concern-
They would win ultimately.
Yeah, they would win. They, we've lost to them before. It's a tough, hard one.
Thank you.
We, we, we want to finish the tree cutting up in, up in-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we got our, yeah. Instead of random perspectives, they were doing cash value. And they were trying to tell us on the other hand that they were doing burnout.
I, I will go back to asking if they'd consider taking the barbed wire off.
That'd be good.
I, I know that they are somewhat frustrated. There'll be people who've been ripping down their signs and somebody started to pull down their fence. Well, they could post someone there and they could keep an eye on it.
Make sure nobody thinks it's on the, on the barbed wire.
So can we want to open this case and have discussions back from the center? I want to go home too.
No, we don't have to. It's not, we haven't looked at it. I'll take it on the mic. I'm not going back. We'll take it on.
Mike, are you going to be the?
Yes. So wouldn't we like, you would like to scum and say, who's discussing right now?
Uh, we don't have to go into a closed session. I think, I have a suggestion about what the next steps should be.
Okay.
And so you, you close the public hearing tonight. And so you have to issue your determination within 62 days of tonight, which is Friday, November 29. You're meeting, you're meeting twice in November. As far as I can tell, November 14th.
Once.
But your second meeting, that's the new date.
Correct, so we don't meet.
You don't meet?
No.
Okay, so November 14th.
Nope.
Date that I think that we should shoot for.
Okay, you also told us that if the applicant was wanting to extend it, we could, if we needed to.
Yes, I spoke into the Victoria College or what you said, if we need more time, they would be willing to extend it. And I, I think that what I'd like to do is to have an attorney-client meeting with the board on Zoom if you guys are up for it. And if you've had a chance to sort of reflect upon the information you've gotten. And, and then maybe we can, you have to have your deliberations as a public. But I think that it would be good for you to have a conversation without just to understand what the legal issues are.
Well, that seems to be really what we're dealing with.
That's really what this is.
You know, I have to say that Mr. Richard Van Zongen's probably really spoke to you something.
Yeah, maybe a couple of people. I mean, the BPJ associates case is at the center of the question that's being presented and, you know, the parties understand that. And so, you know, you're going to have to sort through the arguments that they're making and decide, you know, how do you want to go? And Kim and I can help you to tell them what the strength of the law are on your decision. And, and I think, so we can have that conversation and then you guys can have your deliberations in, in an open forum at a meeting after that. And then if you give some direction to us, we can take a shot at doing a graphic resolution for you and circulate that. And, you know, you can take, take a look at that and see whether it accurately reflects what it bore in one.
All right, let me reverse engineer this. We should have the meeting on the 14th.
Of November.
Yeah, of November. So we should deliberate. The next chance to deliberate, we have the 10th and the 24th. So I guess the 24th, we'll have to deliberate on the 24th.
Because- October 10th and 24th are your, those are your-
Yeah, the 10th, so we're just getting all the comments back by the 8th.
Yeah.
So that's not giving us enough time to really get into this. So then that gives us a couple of weeks to sort through it. Have our meeting somewhere between the 14th and the 18th. You have to, you know, up anywhere until the 24th, between the 14th and the 24th. So maybe, yeah, we'll just sort, keep that in mind, guys. And we'll, we'll find it the best time and start, you know, start running those numbers around so we can get as many. I know Mark was on the one Zoom call, like, in his car and trying to show it to the inner.
Is there a particular day of the week that works for board members? Like a Friday is a good day?
I'm kind of old, but.
You're talking daytime or night?